So I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Uh, January twenty, or January seventh council meeting. Uh, roll call please.
McKnight, Myers, Roa, Vogel, Kinder.
Here. Pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright. Um, public comment on agenda items?
Yes, I have Jason Ramsey.
I thank you. I'm here to talk about smoke shops and I strategically picked this time so I can listen to whatever everyone else has and steal all their notes. So I wrote this while I was listening to them and I hope I did a good enough job. So, um, thank you for listening to me. I, um, I don't want to take away from all the fantastic comments already made by the public during the hearing regarding the need to regulate what we're calling tobacconists, so well-defined by city staff in this proposed amendment. It was heartening to hear so many passionate, well-thought-out comments. While the City Planning Commission has not been able to deliberate on this matter, I felt important to weigh in both as a private citizen of Needville, as well as Chair of the City Planning Commission, and in general, in favor of less regulation, less red tape, and fewer obstacles to finding vibrant and creative approaches to strengthen our community. However, when a lack of regulation permits an activity that negatively impacts the growth and health of other aspects of that community, it bears caution and prudence on the part of the city to exert its influence to step in and protect the community resources that support and retain what we love about our community. As such, I support amending the zoning ordinance to allow tobacconists only by special exception. And by the way, the City Planning Commission is an all-volunteer commission, supporting Peter and the city's hard work and the other opening. If there are folks that have energy to help make things like this happen, together we can make a real difference in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
That's it.
I'm sorry, that is all.
No, no, no. I was giving you time. Um, notice of executive session meetings?
None.
It says approval of minutes.
None.
Got it. Yeah, yeah. Uh, communications?
None.
Uh, managers' report?
Uh, the only update that I have is the crisis intervention specialist started on January 2nd. Brian Swavy, um, comes from Crawford County. And he has been already on a number of calls. You are more than welcome to come meet him. He's currently, uh, training right now with CTI.
Um, old business?
None.
Alright, let's move right on to new business.
Here.
Discussion zoning ordinance amendments, smoke shops.
Alright, thank you. Um, as you recall, uh, we brought up the possibility of amendment to our zoning ordinance for smoke shops back in, uh, November. Uh, it was one of a suite of other amendments that could come before, uh, City Council, um, to improve the currently adopted zoning ordinance. Uh, we broke out this one in particular, uh, to make sure that it's not conflated with other issues and to give you all the time and diligence you need to consider this, uh, separately without the confusion of a million other things at once. Uh, even though on the agenda, it's called smoke shops, that's a colloquial term, so in the ordinance amendment before you, we have redefined it as tobacconists. You will notice, uh, they did distribute a map of, uh, current tobacco retail and other tobacco sales, uh, that are current registered, uh, with the Pennsylvania Department of Revenue as of yesterday afternoon. Uh, and you'll notice that not all forms of tobacco retail rise to the level of what we think looks and acts as a smoke shop. The ordinance amendment before you is not necessarily my final recommendation to you, but it is a presentation of those things that zoning, uh, can take a look at and restrict, uh, with regards to what the smoke shop, uh, where it can be located in a district, what sort of displays and the manner of, uh, it can have in its signage, what sort of other non-signage displays it can have outside its hours of operation, um, and the manner in which it can conduct its sales. Uh, I did check that many of these are similar to, uh, zoning regulations that have cropped up, uh, in, uh, other communities in Pennsylvania and elsewhere. And if these are too strict for, uh, our liking, which they might, uh, end up, uh, being because I did choose the stricter of many of these regulations, um, at the very least for consistency with our other treatment of similar uses, I believe that an appropriate window would be to consider this as the strictest baseline and then to treat, uh, anything that arises to what we're calling a tobacconist in line, uh, no less strict than taverns and bars or drugstores. You'll be welcome to, uh, answer any questions, uh, give you any more clarification. Otherwise, I hope to get a lively debate from all of you about what provisions are, uh, fair and should be applied to the city.
Any state, this is, the state just doesn't, they just, it's up to you. I'm just curious. When you were looking into any state regulations about signs, ornaments?
Yes.
Saturation, yeah.
Well, when it, when it comes to displays, uh, for these tobacco products, uh, they do have to, um, any of their messaging has to comply with the state law on, uh, drugs, cosmetics, and other controlled substances. There's, so like truth in advertising, the manner in which it's displayed now for children, you know, you can't have, and remember Camel Joe is no longer, uh, the cartoon character you can use. I went through the state law and what it does control is the truthfulness of the content, uh, of your labeling of tobacco products, uh, and of the advertisement. Uh, but it does not limit anything that zoning can limit when it comes to how much or the quantity of signs or how you advertise yourself within a community. State law otherwise requires, and this is all my understanding, I wish I might get wrong around the details, but otherwise, state law requires, you to be registered and licensed as a tobacco retailer, um, with the Department of Revenue so you can remit, uh, taxes on your products. But, otherwise, I'm not aware that the state applies any such cap, um, on how much product you can shift within any community.
But to clarify, the shops that are in place now can remain in place even if we pass an ordinance?
Yes.
Right. And if they leave a storefront and another business wants to come in and within a certain period of time, that same business can be installed, is that correct?
Uh, I would have to...
I think we have a year and a day rule.
Yeah, I'd like to double-check that, to be accurate. Cause I'm not sure if, uh, if it's a non-conforming use. It's not quite solid in my memory, uh, if that non-conforming use can continue in that same location if the operation shut down voluntarily rather than involuntarily. So for instance, if places, uh, in one address or a convenience store, that convenience store that sells, you know, or a smoke shop, decides that they want to go out of business for 364 days, um, they just leave, not by fire, not by act of God, anything, they just choose a different business and another operation comes in. I'm not confident that that's covered under a non-conforming, uh, uses. But I can check that.
I heard some comments tonight, and the comments, and they're all valid comments, but the same comments that were made about the tobacco shops were also made about the games of skill. But if you think about it, they also apply to piercing parlors, tattoo parlors, and any establishment that serves alcohol. Are we going to go after them? Uh, they're all, technically you shouldn't be under 21 and go into a, a bar or restaurant downtown Needville. And who's going to enforce these regulations?
Right. So there is the matter of what we can enforce under our zoning ordinance and that they're meeting the minimum standards of non-criminal, uh, regulations and then there's the separation of what is otherwise a police matter or a, uh, PLCB, uh, matter. Yeah, we'll bring that up. I, I'm not sure that our zoning or officer, I mean, I have read cases where a zoning officer and its deputies, uh, does investigations of establishments to make sure that their clientele are, and all are operating under the conditions that were applied when they got their permit and are compliant with their current zoning ordinance. But yeah, whether we have the capacity or the willingness and ability to enforce everything that one might want.
I think we received a briefing to the extent that convenience stores would fall in, under a different category. So we'd be regulating sales of cigarettes and vaping products for standalone, but we wouldn't necessarily have the ability to do that for convenience stores?
Uh, not quite. Uh, the way I've presented, uh, it to you, under the definition of a tobacconist, rather than as a smoke shop, which one thinks occupies it as the sole use in a storefront, is that if in the judgment of the zoning hearing board or the zoning officer, uh, the, uh, amount of product that they shift, uh, or display is of a significant, and I admit it's ambiguous what is a significant, uh, amount, then they come under the tobacconist use as well. So you can be both a convenience store and a tobacconist. And that portion of the store that operates as a tobacconist will come under these regulations as well. So, do, you know, you can have one storefront operating as two things.
Well, I'm looking at section JJ three and four. You know, such establishment can be located 500 feet from near the property line of any of the tobacconist, church, school, or other institution. Country Fair, of course, is much less than 500 feet from a church. And it's less than 500 feet from, uh, residential structures on North Main.
Yep.
So if they went out of business and someone else wanted to come in?
Then Country Fair could come in, uh, or someone else could come in, but not necessarily operate the same level of tobacco sales as Country Fair does now.
Okay.
That's as it's written before you.
I have, I have a problem with, by the way, I don't know where air dancers are, but we'll talk about that.
They're like at car dealerships and they, you know.
Oh, okay, okay.
Also, as it is before you, however, in the example, um, the one, the, uh, the baseline of a proposed zone where tobacconists, uh, could be permitted by special exception would be in GBM where, um, Country Fair is. So in your specific example, Country Fair, oh, I'm sorry, no, no, you're right, you're right, I'm sorry, the 500 feet.
500 feet?
Yeah. Yeah, 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 good catch.
I'm also concerned about the subjectiveness of having one person determine if a substantial amount of, of commerce was done in this subject. How do we define substantial? Probably 60% of the sales up here, again, Country Fair, are probably gasoline, but maybe 25%. Some people call 25% substantial, others wouldn't. So there's some subjectivity in here that I think really needs to be addressed.
And I would welcome any aid in addressing that substitute.
I'll be glad to supply.
Oh, I know, sorry. I meant that as a rhetorical.
I know you did.
Is it, did you find any ordinance as like, other communities, they're like, laid out 50% of merchandise or in sales?
Yeah, I, I, in scrutinizing those, I found them, uh, inadequate themselves. Uh, some would say by the amount of shelf, uh, shelf of footage dedicated to product. Some would say the amount of square foot of floor area or retail area dedicated to product. Some would say the percentage of sales dedicated to the product. Um, some would, uh, I would have a difficult time, uh, trusting that we could force any of those, cause nobody's really stringing about cigarettes on 100 square feet of shelf area. A lot of these smoke shops are anywhere, smoke shops, tobacconists, sell a lot of other product. Some smoke, just again, smoke shops in a storefront could sell less product than say, a large convenience store that's currently called a convenience store. So by any measure, it seems to slip in unless they can prove that their sales of tobacco products or to, or related paraphernalia is only incidental to the other businesses, uh, and products that they sell. Just like Country Fair, I don't know what they would say if they were presented with a question on a zoning permit. Would you be able to stay in operation if you would give up your, uh, your tobacco counter?
And that's my concern. Uh, if, for example, if we were to go to Country Fair or someplace like that, are we opening ourselves up for a lawsuit? Nope, they're in business to make money regardless of how much, you know, they have that product, they want to move it. And I'm, I'm quite sure if the increase goes up, that they're gonna have the supply or get the supply to meet that demand. So where do we come in then? Or we can all know you can't increase your sales, you know, you have to, are we saying that they're only allowed to sell a certain amount, stock a certain amount? And if so, what is that gonna bring on the city? Is it, are we opening ourselves up for lawsuits?
Uh, typically it wouldn't get to the point of, uh, a lawsuit, um, so the way it should have been, uh, if everybody followed, uh, the law, this being a special exception permit, um, the way it's presented right now, to do any tobacco sales or something, they'd have to apply for a zoning permit, then they'd have to go to the zoning hearing board who would determine, uh, whether they fall under the category and then they would be able to negotiate or give, uh, a test to what their business practices were and then come to, uh, the zoning hearing board would be able to establish conditions on the operation. They could arise to, uh, a lawsuit, uh, if they are denied those conditions. Typically, there's a lot of deference to the zoning hearing. First of all, anybody can sue anybody for anything. That doesn't mean you win. The case, court cases that I have read have typically, um, given a lot of deference to the zoning hearing board in the interpretation of the municipality's own zoning ordinance. But I also agree with you, you're right. I would like to have more robust and concrete standards for what significant tobacco sales would be. The point being that you need to apply for a zoning permit and there should be a check first with the zoning, uh, code enforcement officer and then the zoning hearing board. And if you don't pass those, um, then it can arise to, uh, a court case. But typically, the court cases are not for the denial of a permit, but for some enforcement action. At least according to this, the roster of zoning court cases that I've had the privilege to review. But I'm not a lawyer and I'm not the city's unit. This is just the context in which I am writing this ordinance for your consideration.
What, the zones are the games of skill permitted? Can you compare that to what zones with tobacconists would be?
Yeah, I'll check that out. New dump should gain facility, special exception in GBM and special exception in EDC.
Okay, and then this one is written for GBM only, I think?
Uh, right, now, yes.
But if you were going to be consistent, you could argue it should also be in EDC.
That would be up to you. And that is also if you find that there's actually an equivalence between skill, so skilled parlors and some smoke shop parlors. There's a distinction between both of those that came up. When games of skill being that those are mostly unattended by any staff whatsoever and have no, cash retail exchange or a person, you know, it's, it's not a retail establishment. Whereas, uh, tobacco retailers are. There's somebody behind a counter, um, who is selling you things. There's somebody who's ostensibly supposed to card you to make sure that you're of age to buy their products. There's ostensibly licensing with the Department of Revenue to make sure that you're admitting taxes on your products, unlike games of skill.
What is the reasoning behind not permitting drive-through facilities? I know they have a drive-through facility in Burnham Township.
I believe my reasoning when I put that in there, one, was to give you the option in that some, some businesses, the neighborhood-oriented businesses that, uh, were deemed to be, say, of acceptable form in our mixed-use one district, our mixed-use two districts, which are a mix of residences, uh, and other businesses, prohibit drive-throughs on some forms of businesses. So, additional uses. I admit, I'm failing to have the entire zoning ordinance in my memory.
What were you thinking in, uh, behind your question? I'm just curious. Why, yes or no?
Well, I mean, if we're, if we're going to limit, if we're going to limit the facilities, we might be taking a page out of other municipalities' book and saying, at least let's be consistent in the way they are allowed to sell.
Yep. Um, so I got your answer. Limited retail, special exception, and Diamond Park heritage permitted in mixed-use two, institutional campus, uh, special institutional and general business and manufacturing. It's limited retail, which is not full retail, limited retail are small-scale shops, 3,000 square feet or under, which we say by special exception in Diamond Park and special institutional. Business hours are limited 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM. No outdoors display of merchandise, no drive-through, dry-lob services is permitted. So that's one, and I believe there's other similar examples, um, in our uses.
I guess I have a little bit of sarcasm in my thinking, like, we are trying to encourage people to walk gym. We don't want them to be going to the drive-through. I just like, I just, I was thinking, you know, I was, I was trying to imagine where they would even have a drive-through. And I'm looking at empty lots, like the one across from First District, it's like across from this school. Like, I couldn't even think of where someone would put a drive-through. And, and they could actually do their drive-through, right? They would just have to apply for a special exception.
No, they would have to apply for a variance.
A variance, yeah.
For it to operate.
I kinda, I don't know.
Let's see. Commercial uses in NU1 and NU2 districts, this is not a special exception, this is just the conditions that you have to abide by if you're operating. Their hours of operation, 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM, uh, no outdoor storage of any kind. Nothing on drive-throughs there. So that's for permitted things. Let's see. Yeah, I guess it's permitted more than I remembered. Are these, I'm just discovering that our sexually-oriented businesses have no prohibition on drive-throughs either. So, just saying.
Wait, don't keep the mic raised.
But, and there's always something that, you know, it's just.
It's perplexing.
I'm just saying.
Yeah, I mean, it's, so I guess in the interest of, you know, Peter, when hearing he says that, right, like, what we're looking at is pretty strict. And, and so, you know, maybe with councils, like, willingness, like, we workshop something that
Yes. I was not expecting you to, to accept this as written. I was expecting you to consider this as the example of what has and could be done and pull it back to what you think is acceptable and fair.
Yeah, I guess so in that, uh, in that, with that in mind, uh, and admittedly, I have to read the minutes from the public hearings, I apologize. Speaking maybe out of turn. Yeah, I would, I, I personally am feeling like I'm open to adding more districts, though keeping the special exception, right? Like, there would need to be an, uh, an exception granted. I don't care that much about the drive-through, I would strike that. I don't care that much about air dancers. I think we should strike fairy lights, they're nice. Uh, and I, I do would want to keep, though, I really, I like the provision of you have to turn off your electronic signs when your shop is closed. I think I would keep that. And all of this too, and, and maybe to Jim's point, I don't, I, it would probably be possible to specify what significant portion is and how we constitute that.
And also remember, it's not really uncommon, uncommon here, but you can have by special exception in general business and manufacturing and then special exception in another district. That has, that is different criteria than internal business.
So it could still be more stringent, like, if you get the exception, there's still, there are more provision, like, that they used to do or something?
Yeah, it's, it's not really happening in our ordinance, but you can have different specific criteria based on what district it's in, not just permitted or special exception, you have special exception for, like, three criteria in one place and then special exception with five to seven criteria in another place.
Um, the other thing that's coming to mind for me, right, obviously, we're looking at this in a zoning context. I know we talked about it yesterday, but frankly, I don't remember what your answer was, I'm sorry, but, uh, like, is it possible for us to have like a cap like the state does for like liquor licenses, right? Like, this is the number of smoke shops we have in Needville, and we can't have any more than that. I don't, I don't, like, regardless of where they are.
That's, uh, uncommon enough that I am not confident about how legal that is under, under zoning.
And, but that would be business licensing, which would be a different thing, right? Like, the number of licenses we could?
Not, not necessarily. Like, for instance, there's, there's de facto ways of limiting the density of, of businesses, like, for instance, the, you're limiting how many smoke shops you can have already in a district by including a distance from another smoke shop requirement. There might only be room enough for four of them in GBM, and that leads you to the absolute ceiling of how many are, um, quite allowable at any one time in the district. When it comes to licensing, I'm, I, I, again, want to check into it. I believe, right now, you could put a cap on the number of, uh, businesses that operate in one district. For instance, the cap on most all the other districts is zero, right? So, um, but when it comes to licensing, uh, I'm also, I'd prefer to look into that more before giving a definite answer of what is possible and lies.
Peter, those, uh, isn't necessary to have a license, I assume it is? Peter, those, isn't necessary to have a license, like, images for a pharmacy that dispenses marijuana? And isn't that really why these have proliferated, because they're anticipating a loosening up?
I haven't looked too much into dispensaries. The definition of tobacconist assumes that, just like there's a new variety of tobacco and nicotine products, that that might be expanded to also include, you know, THC's or cannabis or whatever. I don't know what the state's regulations on all those are, except I know that Walgreens isn't selling you a joint.
Right.
So.
Peter, how many, how many tobacconists do we have in the city limits?
Sixteen.
Sixteen? There's one. I counted fifteen dots.
He did count fifteen dots, but there are sixteen tobacco retailers in the city. These are just the dots as of yesterday that the Department of Revenue has put out as having current licensures.
And this includes?
The ones without licensure?
Yeah.
I can't say that they're without, it's just, this is what I pulled yesterday afternoon.
And that includes Country Fair?
Yes.
Okay, I was just looking.
Country Fair, Tops, Dollar General, anywhere that sells tobacco cigarettes.
Do you have a separate, like, just a smoke shop? Do you know that number that are just storefronts, tobacconists?
Well, don't you know that depends on your definition of smoke shop?
Well, when you walk by, they have signs that say.
Yeah, if they, if they call themselves a smoke shop, I think we got five.
We have five, yeah.
So that's, one in Downtown Mall, you got SNH by Quick Stop, you have, where is it? Four. Smoke Buddies, the other one, Chestnut, so, are that four?
Is there one on Park? Is there one on Park?
Still? Anyone out there?
By the Heritage. Across from Wendy's, is that not a smoke shop?
Uh, yeah, no.
Or is that not?
Chestnut.
That's a game.
Yeah.
All American.
They looked at a more local business.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're right, they were.
Yeah, so I think those are the, no, four are the ones that hang a sign outside that says, "Smoke Shop." But, I don't know, Smoke Buddies sells beanies in front of the window, so.
Peter, this, when you did do the air dancer, is that, is that when you're, like, when you're talking about, right, like, drawing people in and marketing? Are you talking because of, like, you're looking at the ones on our Main Street here and you're, you're thinking that that would not, or is this something that's in a lot of ordinances? Like, some of these things are?
Yes. It can be in a lot of ones.
As silly as it sounds, this is just one of the things that you've seen, so you put it in?
Yes, yeah. The, I'm predicting the level of aggressive advertising that is often accompanied by smoke shops, that would be in Congress with the level of advertising, say, for many of its neighboring businesses. How about, yeah?
I have a question, it's a little off topic, but do we have a smoking ordinance here in town? We don't, like, far away from buildings or not inside buildings, or I just was, I was just wondering when I heard.
No.
We're housing, so you have a distance.
Okay. All right. I'm just, that was just something when I was listening to, you know, me and public comment, I was just wondering if we have.
Peter, what is, what would you like from council? Yeah.
If you have none of these provisions, that you'd like to come to a consensus, I've, I just want some direction so I could revise this into something that we'd be able to consider putting up for, back to the planning commission and for a public hearing thereafter.
All right, I think that we, what, you're going to look into the number in town, right? Jim, how's you looking in, into having it in EDC and GBM? Is that, is that correct, Jim?
Yeah, I think they should, these be consistent, yeah.
Okay.
Autumn doesn't care about restrictions on the drive-throughs.
Right.
And road lights, fairy lights, string lights, you know, that heavy electronic stuff, it seems like those, that's overkill as well.
Overkill with the other provisions about signage.
Got it.
I think that one provision about signage, and they're shut off when they're closed, that feels good.
I do think eight and nine, the hours of operation and the sign, you know, shut off, as was said before, that's a good, that's a good idea, in my, you know, thoughts. And the, the distance, right, from schools, from homes, from churches.
So what I hear from you as well is that it might be acceptable to distance from schools, but the distance from residences would be too difficult to accomplish without being too onerous. That's what you think, Jim?
I think so.
Okay.
These regulations, I mean, these changes, again, to clarify, hours of operation will not apply to existing facilities, is that correct?
Unless you choose that to. Right. There's possible that you could have, like, an amortization so long as you, so long as you show that an increased restriction is not an undue, it burdens some cost to a business. Not necessarily like a loss of revenue, but an actual cost on a business to comply.
So a closing earlier than normal is not going to be a cost on a business, it'll just, it's just going to be a loss of revenue?
Loss of potential revenue, unless it's demonstrated otherwise. That might be one of those things, Larry, that you bring up, that could generate a lawsuit because of how much profit is lost from a business. But it is possible. I just did not include that in this. So, yeah, possible, not included. Anybody that's operating on these hours, we tag them as non-conforming and they, they can do business as usual. It's just every, every new, every new unit comes in, just games of skill.
Peter, our Water Street redevelopment area, the straddles in MU2 and GBM and in MU3, that, MU2 and GBM?
Yeah.
Okay. I guess my, I would be interested in keeping the residential limits, because folks in that particular redevelopment area express not wanting to live by a smoke shop, and I would, and a hun, I think it's, what are we, in here, it's proposed as a hundred feet rather than the 500 feet, which, which is a little wrong viewing.
Right, and that's, that's one, I just honestly had measured that from, from Berna's to the next house over.
I, I think arguably.
From Berna's, sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, no, no.
To the next house.
I measured that from a couple of the ones that already exist to the next door's house, and was able to say, yeah, that's about 100 feet, that's.
So like Berna's could keep selling?
Yeah.
Okay.
I was just gonna say, everybody, all of these residents, right, like, they're gonna say the same thing, they probably want distance.
Sure.
They don't want to work.
Yeah, I've been asked, so I feel like you're one of that.
Let's be honest, I was also a back of the envelope, we used to sketch it out on the map to see what already exists. Don't anybody go out and take an iron.
Andy's got it right now, I've got the tape.
You don't know from a drive-through sexually oriented business. Council, thanks for considering.
Council, I have to consider Andy's opinion. Great, great.
Boy.
Okay, does Andy have any other questions before we move on, move along on that discussion?
So if I get all these into a draft, over then, I think, a couple of weeks from now, it might be comfortable sending them on to the planning commission, either February meeting?
You're gonna let us look at it before you?
Yes.
And I think, can we just do the email, like how we have done in the past?
Yeah.
All right. Discussion 2025 council meeting times.
So, as with every new year, council needs to confirm what their meeting schedule will be, so we can get that advertised. Staff is suggesting still maintain the first and third Tuesday of each month. However, staff would also suggest moving study sessions to be on a quarterly basis rather than on a monthly basis, but it's up to council on whether or not to consider that.
I would be supportive of that.
Yeah.
Same time would be a quarterly, it's fine with me.
If something came up, we could do it as need, as need, like if.
This is the special session?
Yes.
Yeah. So it'd be, January would be the first quarter, so we'd have one next week if needed. And then, you know, quarterly after that, and we'll advertise those quarterly meetings.
It's fine.
Thought behind that is just a lot of meetings in a row, or?
It's a combination of a lot of meetings. We have canceled a number of study sessions as well, and that's the cost to advertise the cancellation each time. So, probably less expensive to schedule a special session rather than advertising cancellations each time.
Do we have a study session topic for January? Does it make sense to do it at the end of the quarter, and then we've got one that would give us one in December around budget time?
Sure.
So if we do it at the end of the year? Yeah, so for March, have a question.
I don't, we haven't really had, like, a discussion for the year, like, our plan kind of for the year, that's what I was.
For priorities.
Oh, for, for our study session, yeah, yeah.
So, but I don't know that we're ready to discuss that next week either, so.
Yeah.
Thank you. February?
Yeah. Yeah, can we just add that to the council agenda for the next?
To do what?
Okay.
Priorities.
Figure it out.
Not, not the second Tuesday of February?
No, just a regular.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. So are we thinking just to have the council meeting same time, Tuesdays, six o'clock, first and third? I'm for it, and with the, with the study sessions.
And then, but what week are we thinking in the quarter? What, what month, first or?
End of the quarter, we're thinking.
Okay, I wanted to make sure you were.
She suggested you were, okay, no, sorry, Autumn suggested, yeah. Yeah, I'm, I'm for it, how's everybody else feel?
I'm for it.
You want a motion?
Yes.
Some move?
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Rea?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye.
Discussion appointments to French Creek Council of Governments.
So, this is an annual appointment as well. Gretchen has been the delegate, Jamie alternate, myself an alternate, Darla secretary, staff's just, just maintaining the same, if that's fine with council.
It's fine.
Does that mean Darla as secretary, like, do you go sometimes? Do we have staff go? Does staff go?
We usually don't. The delegate usually goes. Darla, it means that if there's any correspondence, special correspondence, that Darla would respond on behalf of the delegate if you'd be.
Like you being the delegate?
Yeah. I'm the vice president.
You are? Success for us.
I agree.
I didn't know it happened.
Yeah. I'm for it. So can I have a motion?
Motion? Second.
Discussion, roll call.
McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Rea?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye.
Public comment on non-agenda items?
We have none.
Council member statements, Jim?
Oh, thank you. I'll keep it brief. Tonight is Orthodox Christmas, so Merry Christmas to our Orthodox and Russian friends.
Thank you, Jim. Gretchen?
I just don't, I like to have any comments. We heard, we heard a lot from everybody, thank you so much for coming, that was really, actually really helpful, so thank you for your comments.
Larry?
Yeah, I'd like to thank everyone for coming. I also want to let the business people know, I understand what you're going through. My daughter will not take my granddaughter down because there was some language that she heard and she's very uncomfortable. And that bothered me because my, my granddaughter loves Saturdays down at the Market House, and I'm willing to see and do what we can to make me go a place where people can go and be comfortable, not to have to worry about vulgar language or, how do you say it without sounding inappropriate, or people that, it's hard to say without sounding or be really demeaning, but people there that are there to look to take advantage or don't care, showing respect for other people. I think that's the way I would put it. So I'm willing to, us to do what we can to make it a comfortable place where everybody can go and feel safe and not have to worry about their children seeing or picking up bad habits.
Autumn? Thank you, Larry. Autumn?
Yeah. I apologize for not being at the public hearing tonight. I appreciate the folks who shared comment ahead of time in, in writing, and I look forward to reading the minutes. I do appreciate that you all were here and were willing to speak, and while I didn't get to hear what you said, I imagine it's a testament to, to the care that you have for our town and our community, and, yeah, just grateful that we live in a place where we all want it to be vibrant and safe and healthy. And I think that there's lots of ways that we can make that happen, and I think the city obviously, like, plays a role, and it's so great that we've got other partners at the table in, in that work too, so that it's not just regulation, but there's other things to do too. And, yeah, we've seen it work over the last several years, there's still lots to do to fill our storefronts in our downtown, but, yeah, every time that I go downtown, it's just so lovely, and I'm just grateful to you all for making that so, and making this place people want to live in. So thanks for being here, thanks for caring, and happy new year again. Study yesterday, but you all weren't here yesterday, so.
Thank you, Autumn. Yeah, I'm just gonna say the same thing. Thank you, guys, for coming and voicing your opinion on something that you care deeply about. Thank you for, you know, loving Needville in a way that, that has showed everybody, you know, the improvements and the change, the culture in this place, where, I don't know, it's really great to be around people who love this place like I do, right, and that care so deeply about it that we will accept nothing less, right, than, than the place that, that we want to live and raise our kids, and I am very blessed and lucky to be around, just like so many people that love this place. I don't know, I'm gonna get emotional, I just, I, I love this place, my mother was here, and she loved this place. So, again, thank you for being here and making this place a place that hopefully my kids come back and raise their own children. So, with that, I'm gonna ask for a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Motion? Second.
Discussion, roll call.
McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Rea?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?